All right, good evening, everyone. We are on the air and I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. We have no one for the open forum. So would everyone please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask the council's approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of September 23rd, 2014 and the regular city council meeting of September 23rd, 2014. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have council discussion and hats off to hometown hits and I hear that Edwina has a whole slew of them. So go ahead, Councilmember Garcia.
Now should I do them all or?
Ah, you better save up for you for Sue. Sue's fine with them.
This was mine.
All right.
Well, I won't do yours except I'll just do the emotional part of it.
I see. Okay. I'll give the correct analytical version then.
You know what I liked about this tribute to the arts was the fact that it was so inspiring, you know, because you not only saw the Richfield High School Band and the Holy Angels Band play together with each other, but you also saw, what was the name of that other band, Sue?
There was the Northern Winds and the...
And the Richfield Symphonic.
The Symphonic.
And they were like over 100 and they played together. Just beautiful. I mean, I was so moved. I mean, I got tears in my eyes and I went up there and gave Dave Butler a big hug because he really worked hard on it. I mean, geez, that really, I mean, every, well Sue will tell you all about it, but it was such a moving experience. And I thank the citizens that went to it and I thank all the people that participated in it because, you know, they said, "This is gonna make a big, big dent in the way Richfield, people think of Richfield." Just beautiful. Yeah, okay, now...
She's got a list.
Here's my list. Uh, there's be a ribbon cutting ceremony at the hub for savers. That's gonna happen October the 17th at 11:00 a.m. Okay, that's second. And two, Woodlake Nature Center will have their half haunted Halloween. That's October the 18th from 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. And then, you know, the magicians, anybody doing the magicians?
No, go ahead.
Okay, the magicians. I've gotten in trouble a lot of times by doing too many of them. The Magicians Hockey Team are gonna have a face-off against breast cancer and that's gonna take place, oh geez, I didn't write that down, when is the date? The 25th, okay, 25th of October at 7:05 p.m. at the Ice Arena and, and the magicians are going to be wearing pink jerseys and once the game is over, they will be auctioning off those pink jerseys which will go to the Susan Coleman's, um, cancer fund. And then, after that, October, oh no, the day before, October the 24th, there will be a tip, a cop. Um, and this is really nice too because the police will be at, at Hula Hands and they will be actually, Jay, are you gonna be actually serving or helping serve?
We'll be, uh, we're...
Oh, good. Yeah, this, this is fun because I like the police to wait on me.
What times are that for dinner? Do they have any time?
They have from 5:00 to 9:00, 9:00 p.m. at Hula Hands. And so the, the police will come to your table, wait on you and, you know, and you can actually say, you know, "I don't like that service" or whatever, you know. I mean, it's a fun time for those of us who like to...
What, what day was that again?
24th.
October the 24th. For those of us who'd like to, uh, who'd like to, well Jay, see now Jay's here, so he already knows what I'm gonna do. And the proceeds from these tips will go to Special Olympics. So all of those are good happenings and, and hope you all participate.
All right, Councilmember Sandal, it's to you this time.
All right, thank you. Well, Edwina was already discussing the wonderful concert that we had and it was just super duper. I brought my mom and she just loved it. She, I wheeled her back and forth between the two locations and she had a wonderful time. She couldn't believe how good the music was and she's, uh...
When you say two locations, explain that.
Oh, well, there was dancing and some of the music, musical performances were in the cafeteria and then the main stage in the auditorium had entertainment all afternoon long. So there was a lot of entertainment. Sweet Adeline sang in the cafeteria as well as two different dance groups, Just for Kicks and the other one was, um, which was it? Let's see, oh, the Richfield Recreation Dance Company. So those were both there and, and I agreed with Edwina that it was really, really moving to watch the Richfield Band performance at the same time as the Holy Angels performance playing together. Now that's, especially for a graduate from Holy Angels, I mean, that's a big deal. It was really a wonderful tribute to the arts. And, and hearing the full sound of both the Symphonic Band and the Northern Winds Concert Band and all of these performers all have connections to Richfield. That was what was so amazing. Every single one of them was either a graduate of Richfield High School, the two symphonic bands, one was originally the American Legion Band and the other rehearses in Richfield at the high school. So it was, you know, there were so many connections in Richfield. Marilyn Obo was a 1964, Marilyn, excuse me, Ford, who played the obo, was a Richfield High School graduate in 1964. And of course, the Peterson family, which was a main attraction, were all Richfield residents and discussed the fact that for some of them, it was maybe the first time they'd been back in their alma mater. So that was really fun. So it was a great, a great work done by David and his committee, David Butler and the committee that worked very hard to do this and is still working hard to raise additional funds for the band shell. And contributions will be accepted by the City of Richfield. Just send in your check and write "Band Shell" on it. It was wonderful.
You know, and, and to add to that, I, I think that whole afternoon said community. I mean, it was just that, it really warmed your heart because everyone that was there was having a good time and they were, and they were all in a good mood. Well, music puts everyone in a good mood, but the, the band, the two bands played different marches from all of the military units. And I thought that was really unusual and then, and you know, and it's, and then they had the public stand of, you know, they had someone or themselves who represented a particular unit. So it was just a beautiful community event.
It was. Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I did get a couple of calls wondering who stole the family on 66 and Lindale. Just to let everybody know, that's the statue or the, so it will be moved further down toward the fitness place, but if you look, it's fenced off there and Smash Burger is starting its process to be built there.
My Burger.
My Burger, excuse me, My Burger. I said the wrong one. Similar to that, but My Burger will be there, so we are gonna move the statue, whoever called me and asked me where it went. The other thing I'd like to mention is it's getting time for the leaves to fall in the street and do the city a favor and rake up your leaves and dispose them properly. And I know the last rain, the catch basins are getting real full, so if you live on the corner or close to the corner, near the corner, or want something to do, go clean out the catch basins because it really helps then so we don't have the flooding and them leaves don't end up in our, you know, ponds and stick in our storm sewers.
Thanks, good idea. Councilmember Elliott?
You know, I listened to Councilmember Garcia talk about the inspirational side of the musical get-together and also Councilmember Sandal. I wasn't able to make that, but you know, this year, after the winter last year and the lack of fall, I, I would say that, that for visual inspiration, you know, I walk my dogs every morning and every afternoon and I think the colors are as beautiful and as splendid this fall as I've seen in a long time and thank, the leaves are still on the trees, Tom, they're coming down with the winds, but if you get a chance, just go to walk your neighborhood. It really, I mean, it shows the beauty of the canopy of trees and, and, and how beautiful all our little neighborhoods are. And I also, you talk about community, when they had the eclipse last week. My wife had told me the night before, you know, "You're always up anyhow, so why don't you walk the dogs around a quarter to six because then you can see the bloody moon and watch the eclipse and everything." And I got out that morning, I was walking and didn't even remember it until I hit, I think, 67th and Oliver and looked up and I saw the moon and it was right in the middle of it. And as I proceeded, I was going south down Oliver and got to 69th and 70th and I ran into more people out of their houses a quarter and had their kids out to watch it. And, and it's kind of that, that sense of this is something, it's, it doesn't happen all the time, but, but once again, it kind of gives you that sense of community where I can walk at a quarter to six in the morning and talk to, I bet I talked to 15, 20 people that were out looking at it and just communicating as if it was a natural occurrence. I mean, it, you know, I'm not, that's what I'm looking for, I'm not overly emotional, but even I got the warm fuzzies just in, in, in doing that. So I mean, it, once again, it just reaffirms why I live here, why I stay here and why the community means so much to me.
So were you moonstruck?
I, you know, I, no, I'm, if you ask my wife, she'd tell you I've never been moonstruck. So it's, it's not an emotion I experience, but you know, I keep, she keeps, she keeps pushing me and I keep trying.
Yeah. You know, we had a lot of rain, so we do a brilliant color.
Oh, it's brilliant. It really is pretty.
It's been so nice out door knocking and seeing, you know what I've been enjoying? The Halloween decorations. And to that end, I get to give the bad news. I want us to talk about snow. So we want to talk about plowing and parking and believe it or not, we've got to be starting to talk about this. So Chris Link, will you please come up and tell us what's new?
First predict the weather.
Well, Colorado.
I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but this is kind of my yearly time to dash everybody's soul.
I know.
Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the snowplow notification and some changes that we're gonna be doing this year. This is what's coming. We have problems and have had problems with, with vehicles parking on the street and, you know, it's not just so we can plow and get through easier, that of course is one reason, but the, the main reason is so we can get public safety vehicles through. And this picture, if you look, the, the red cars parked into the snowbank, we had difficulties getting through this area all, all winter long. The longer, if we can't get that snow off, off of the street, that catch, there's that clogs and catch basins and that causes springtime flooding. This is a picture of, of what, what our guys kind of routinely go through. We got about six inches on both sides, so when, when cars park directly across the street from each other, we either have to skip it or, or call in smaller trucks to get through. And this, the endless amount of snowbirds, you know, we've got to come back the next day and chase these every, after every snowfall. So to, to kind of learn from the public and to make some changes, we put out the mind mixer, the Richfield Connect question, "Please rate our snowplowing." The way it was worded was currently the goal, the goal city staff to have snow removed from the streets and sidewalks as soon as possible. Priority for plowing is first city streets, city alleys, parking lots, city sidewalk, park paths, then hockey rink. We asked to rate our snow removal operations from one to five and give us any, any comments or feedback of how we're doing. And what we got back was, was actually pretty good. Most, out of, out of the 70 people that, that responded, we had 51 that said we're, we're doing pretty good. The, the interesting part, the, the ones that, that rated us lower were more on the tag and toe, tag and toe more, toe my neighbor, and, and a little bit of not knowing if there's two inches. Are we going to toe? When are we going to do it? So with looking at that and the, and the most, most questions we get during, during a snowfall from, this is from Public Works and Public Safety, "When are you gonna toe? Are you towing? Is there two inches? When's the tow truck gonna be in my neighborhood?" Those are just the common theme we got back from Richfield Connect and the phone calls that we received. So we looked at our current message and it, it just basically, it doesn't say anything other than when there's two inches, you have to move your car. And that's, you know, pretty subjective and leaving a lot of the work up to the resident. So our new message going forward is gonna look like this, "A snow emergency now exists." Those words will be a part of every notification that comes out from the city. It's pretty, pretty straightforward. A snow emergency exists, parking is prohibited until the streets have been plowed to plow, or plowed curb to curb. The notification process we're gonna use this year is a city website. There's also Facebook, Twitter, we'll post there. There's also a new, new function we're gonna use on the city website. There's an e-notify button on the homepage that people can sign up to get weather or, or plowing alerts directly to email to them. We've got a snowplowing hotline, phone number 612-861-9178. And the newest thing this year, we are going to contact local news media and broadcast our, our, and let residents know that there is, that a snow emergency now, emergency now does exist.
Okay.
So, um, we haven't, I haven't heard back from Carol Levin yet. These are the three I've heard back to, or heard back from so far. So along with the notification that a snow emergency does exist, I want to also put our, our plow start times also, when we're gonna start, when, when you expect us to see us through town.
So will they get that when they get an email from that?
If they sign up for the e-notify, yes.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna notify as many places as we can.
About that, that's cool.
Sign up, sign up for Facebook, follow, follow the city of Richfield on Facebook, Twitter. There's the e-notify option. Also, I forgot to tell you that on the city website, there'll be a banner that comes down, a black banner and you won't be able to navigate anywhere through the website until you click that up.
Okay. Question? Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so when you first hit the front page of the website, you're saying there'll be a banner that says what?
It's gonna say, "A snow emergency does now exist."
Okay.
Okay, wow.
Parking is prohibited until streets have been plowed curb to curb.
And are we gonna send this out in the utility bills?
Yep, this will go out in utility bills. We also do, Jay, do we still do the, the blanket? We still do the blanket notification of cars that are parked in the street roughly around now is when we start. We'll do a notification of this on kernel.
Wonderful. Wow. I'm excited.
I would just like to just point out that, that our ordinance didn't change. So when there's two inches of snow on the ground, you can't park until it's plowed curb to curb. We're announcing things and making sure that, that people understand. So before the, before we say, "A snow emergency now exists," up there we'll say, "If there's two inches of snow on the ground from curb to curb, you need to be off the street." So just to be clear, that the two inches requirement is still in place, it's just how we're notifying people when, once we recognize that there is two inches on the ground.
And you know what?
If they don't, if they don't check the website or whatever, I mean, if there's, they still can make the judgment, there's, it's snowing like crazy and there's two inches of snow on the ground, I have to get off the street. That's still true.
Well, I also want to say that, you know, I, the people that contacted me last year, a lot of them were younger residents who'd moved from another city and they'd had a different way of responding and they'd had the email alerts and things like this and it seems like we're catching up to that and that's really great. I'm, I'm really happy to hear that and to see that. Thanks. It's wonderful. Other questions? Council? Great job. Hopefully this really helps people out.
Hopefully it doesn't snow this year. That's what I hope every year.
Yeah, I know.
But when it does, you guys do a wonderful job.
Yes, yes you do. Any other things? Any other announcements? Hats, hats off or anything like that? I'd ask for council approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. We have the consent calendar, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Now, for those in the audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and no further council action on those items would be necessary. Tonight, there are five items on the consent calendar, beginning with item A, consideration of the approval of the request by St. Nicholas Episcopal Church at 7227 Penn Avenue for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for their Fall Fiesta Auction on November 1st, 2014. Item B, consideration of the approval of the request by the Church of St. Richard, 7540 Penn Avenue for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for their November Fest Event on November 8th and 9th, 2014. Item C is consideration of the approval of the renewal of the contract with Chief's Towing Incorporated for the public safety towing services for December 1, 2014 through November 30th, 2015. Item D is consideration of the approval of the resolutions approving the sale of portions of land at 6314 17th Avenue, 6320 17th Avenue and 6408 17th Avenue. And just for public's notification, that, those are just small remnant parcels that were left over after Richfield Parkway and they're being sold to the adjacent property owners. And then item E, consideration of the approval of the 2014-15 contract with the City of Bloomington using federal grant funds to provide services in public health, emergency preparedness, bioterrorism, and the development of a response system. And that would conclude tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Councilmember Garcia, item five.
Okay. This is a consideration of request for a conditional use permit and variance at 7514 Lindale Avenue South, which is where Broadway Pizza is located, which is a, you know, just, not that I'm, you know, but that's really good pizza. It doesn't say that here, but if I had written it, it would have said it. But the proposal contemplates an interior remodel and expansion of the restaurant space as well as construction of a new ADA compliant building entry and waiting area, which is great. The building at 7514 Lindale Avenue is home to two businesses, Broadway Pizza and Dunn and Simonton, Simonton's Printing and Design. Patty Starbuck, building owner and operator, Broadway Pizza is requesting approval of a conditional use permit that would allow her to reapportion the interior building space in order to expand the restaurant. This expansion would repurpose approximately 475 square feet of current tenant space as additional dining space, which is adding 32 seats and a small office, which she needs because right now she's got a little postage stamp of an office. The proposal also includes construction of a new ADA compliant entryway and expanded waiting pickup period, and thank you for that ADA, one thing. The total proposed increase in square footage is 88 square feet. No changes to the kitchen, kitchen equipment or existing dining areas are proposed. And the, the other thing is that we, with the exception of the requested parking setback variance, all the criteria necessary to issue the conditional use permit have been met. And, and that, you know, the parking variance thing, you know, we've all agreed, not only the council and the staff, that Penn, that, you know, that there's, we have sites that offer, you know, some really, you know, bad challenges. And so what we want to do is work with businesses to make sure that, that we can ma- make them, you know, as, as complete and prosperous, hopefully. And so, and all the fees have been paid, so everything is up to date and the staff and the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend this. So does staff want to say anything? Melissa?
No, I don't have anything to add unless you have questions.
No, you, it's, it's a good, it's a good report. So I will move to conduct and close a public hearing by motion. Oh, what's it, a public hearing?
Not yet, not yet. We'll open the public hearing.
Okay, yeah.
Would anyone like to come forward?
I missed that completely.
Speak to that? That's okay. You, you were really excited about talking about the pizza, which a lot of us are, a lot of us go there. I see Patty. Patty, wouldn't you like to come up and say something really nice about the remodel?
About the pizza pie.
Everyone, thanks for all the good comments. We, we appreciate that. My son John and his wife Nina, who are now going to become co-owners with me, are here. I want to thank the staff. I have a very good contractor called S&amp;P Construction, does most Broadway pizzas. He builds out a lot of restaurants. He couldn't be here tonight because he took his children on a vacation for me, a weekend. And he just wanted me to express how much he enjoyed working with Melissa and Rick Renear and how the whole staff really made it quite easy for him. So thank you very much. And we're just really excited to do this enlargement. We've been waiting a long time. Very difficult to take a building that's 44 years old and bring it up to code. It's been, it, there's been challenges, but I think they, they worked through them very well. I'm very happy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we, we appreciate what you say about the staff because I think that they do work hard to, to make sure that, you know, that we can get viable.
Congenial, very congenial working with them.
That's great.
The compromise or what we needed to do or what they needed to do, I think they came to a good point on all of it. I was very happy about it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, we appreciate that and we also appreciate, it's nice when you have a family business.
Yeah, we've been here a long time. I was born and raised in Richfield, worked there when I was in high school. So it's really strange. The building's very old. I've owned it 30 years since September now, so, yeah, that's pretty good, I think, do that. I'm happy about it. But we got another generation stepping up.
Good. So it'll be a ma and son.
Yeah, they're good Richfield residents. They live in Richfield. Their kids go to school in Richfield, so.
Good.
That's good.
Good.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is this a public hearing? Would anyone else like to come forward to speak? Anyone else come forward to speak?
You know, we really should have asked them to bring some pizza.
Oh, yeah, that makes sure that, yeah.
Didn't think of that that until now.
Well, this is a site with a lot of challenges, but it's wonderful to see.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Are there other comments?
Well, I, I...
Councilmember Sandal would like to...
I have a comment and that is that I will personally make it my responsibility to walk to Broadway Pizza and eat my pizza to save on Patty's parking spots.
You're just fighting down the street.
Now, of course, I live two blocks away, so.
What a sacrifice. Take one for the team.
I will do that.
Okay, you can make your motion.
Okay, so I, I, I move that we approve the attached resolution granting a conditional use permit for a building addition and restaurant expansion and a variance for a reduced parking setback at 7514 Lindale Avenue.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carries. Thank you for the Starbucks. Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the honor of bringing the next item, which I didn't think we'd ever bring up ever, but it's consideration of an ordinance establishing a six-month moratorium on the consideration of medical marijuana distribution facilities. Minnesota State Legislature recently approved the Medical Cannabis Therapeutic Research Act of 2014. This act allows for the manufacturing and distribution of medical marijuana and calls for approved manufacturers to secure distribution facility sites that are dispersed throughout the state. The city has received at least two inquiries about potential distribution facilities in Richfield. Richfield's current codes do not address permitting or zoning requirements for medical marijuana. Given the unique characteristics of this use, city staff is recommending adopting a six-month moratorium on consideration of distribution facilities so that this issue can be properly studied and if determined necessary, city ordinances can be amended. During the moratorium period, applications for any approvals related to medical marijuana distribution facilities shall not be accepted. So I ask that we go ahead and open the public hearing for this act.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come forward to speak on this matter? Anyone to speak on this matter? The public hearing is open, anyone?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed.
And then I go ahead and recommend that we approve the attached ordinance establishing a six-month moratorium on consideration of medical marijuana distribution facilities and approve the attached resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance establishing a six-month moratorium on consideration of medical marijuana distribution facilities.
I'll second. Other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Sandow.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a matter dealing with weed assessment, and, but it's a different type of weed.
We're being distinctive.
Wait a minute, this is the best part of the council meeting.
Minnesota state statutes provide that the city may levy a special one-year assessment for the elimination of public health or safety hazards or the elimination of weeds from private property. And the special assessments are based on the costs that the city actually incurs in connection with abatements of weed or the public health or safety hazards, which the city is required to do when the homeowner doesn't maintain the property. And owners of the various properties are notified by the city to take correction, corrective action with regard to the issue of the property. And if the specific property issues are not abated within the time limits that the city sets, then the city will take corrective action and bill the homeowner, which is what we're doing, part of what we're doing today. And in all cases, the property owner will be notified of any unpaid charges or fees that will be assessed against their property. And we have a list attached to our particular memo that says that we have $5,636.10 that we're going to especially assess for safety hazards, and $4,380 that's going to be assessed for weed elimination. And all of these property owners will also be charged a $50 administrative fee for dealing with the issue. Takes staff time to do all this paperwork. And if the homeowner then gets their notice, they have the opportunity, if they wish, to prepay the original principal amount without interest. If they do so, then within 30 days from the date that the city, city council adopts the assessment, if they don't pay it within the time limit, they do have to pay the 5% interest fee. And I believe this is also a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak to this matter? Anyone to speak to this matter at all? This is a public hearing. I'll make a motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed.
And with that, I will approve that we, move that we approve the attached resolution to adopt the assessment for weed elimination from private property and removal of elimination of public health or safety hazards from private property.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Elliott?
If I may, and this is just kind of a precursor to a discussion I think we have to need, or we're going to have to have when we get to the item number 10, which addresses the removal of the trees. I'd spoke to city manager DeBitch and also to Chris Link about, and I happen to notice on this list, there's a couple addresses I know for a fact are owned by banks. And we're still falling down really bad in terms of, of making sure the people that owe this money, not the old property owners and not the people that are going to buy it, get notice, and that includes the banks that own these properties and sit on them and don't keep them up. And I know it's going to come up when we talk about the trees, so I just want to, I want to, just like I said, a precursor that we need to really discuss this and figure out how we can make the people that are actually responsible to pay those, pay them. So whether we've got to chase banks or we need to find some mechanism to get the, the banks who hide behind a, a ton of paper and then try to dump that cost on the, on the, on the next buyer, the next owner of the property, we need to address that. So, so I said, I don't want to, I won't belabor it at this point, we'll talk about it when we get to the, to the trees.
Yeah. You know, and just, just to the point, you saw there's quite a long list of, of folks here that have weed elimination. I have noticed quite a few as I'm outdoor knocking, and I, I've brought this to the city manager and they're working on another solution. I know that they've, they are looking at some people who are repeat offenders and figuring out how to do it. Year after year, I turn in some of the same, but, you know, people, and they're even around my own, my own home, unfortunately. And, and we are, we're moving backwards again, and, and we're working on that. I, I know that Steve hasn't come back with me with a formal thing, but, but I know that we're coming. City manager, would you like to address this at all? We have had discussions of this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Right, I mean, we, we're trying very hard to make sure that, that, that the community doesn't go backward. And people or, or properties that have year after year been problematic, we've shortened up the, we've shortened up the, the process that we have to deal with them, and we're not, we don't, we don't go through the long, the same long process we do dealing with the first-time offenders in terms of getting the places cleaned up. I'm not going to mention any banks, but some of the banks that we try to deal, try to deal with, try to work with are, they're just, they're terrible to work with, that's the best I can say. They're very bureaucratic, they don't respond to us, and, you know, you know, one of the reasons you see the, the rather extensive list of, of properties here and expenses of cleaning up is that, you know, we're just not going to let that, that kind of stuff fester and, and make neighborhoods look bad. So, you know, we're going in and doing it ourselves, and sometimes we, sometimes the stuff is so, is so large, we can't, we don't even do it ourselves, we have to hire a contractor to come in and do it. And, and, you know, it, it does take a lot of extra staff time to do that, to start lining up contractors and, and chase these things around, so it's a, it's a very frustrating process. And like I said, some of the banks are especially miserable to work with, and that's the best I can say for them.
Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and this probably go to the city attorney, I certainly don't expect, expect an answer ad hoc this evening, but is there any way we can create an ordinance that, that you get to the first one, or even, I don't care if it's 170 bucks, if we can create and, and, and place a lien on the property on that, and then what we do is, is, you know, we send out the, if the bank, whoever it is, we send out the notice, we just foreclose on the lien. I mean, somebody's going to sit up and pay attention, we foreclose on the lien, sell the property for the value of that, and we own the property. I mean, let's quit digging around with ordinances and trying to go after them and try to, try to make them, they're not citizens, and they, they don't want to be, it's like you said, they're difficult to deal with, and they're going to ignore us, and, and leave that sitting there until a person buys it, and if there's not a proper title searched on, then it sits on the new, the new owner of the property has to pay something that they weren't even aware of. But that being the case, but can, can you explore for me the, the possibilities of creating an ordinance that allows us to lien the property with these, with these costs? And then what we can do is pursue a foreclosure on the lien if they don't pay attention then, then we own the property.
Yeah. And some of that could be refurbished and nice homes.
Yeah, just to comment. My quest, my guess is, just doing a lot of real estate law, is that this is a once-a-year assessment, which then is a, it's going to be a special assessment, it'll appear on the taxes, but it doesn't get on right away? I mean, these things could have been done five months ago, and the house could have sold in the interim.
In actuality, some of them may be close to 12 months old. I cut off on September 1st in order to meet the timeline that I have to follow to especially assess these with the county. So if something happened in September of 2013 and it wasn't paid, it's probably on this list. So it's potential that there's, there's 11 months old, maybe even 12 months old.
I'm, I'm just trying to think if there's some way we can make this a pending assessment before the council takes an action a year later.
Well, we keep, we keep a, a list of all of these, so if the properties are turning over, we do have a, you know, a pending list and things like that, it's down in assessing, because it starts up, it's, starts up in public safety, and then it moves up to our area, if we're billing, and when we start billing them, and then we notify assessing, and it maintains a list. So if title companies call in or anything like that, we have this on the list. But like I say, as of September 1st, I have to cut off, and then that's when we start developing this list, and the letters go out and things like that, and, so that's, that's kind of the process we go through and things like that. So there is a pending list, but I don't know if it, if it's, if it's doing what you're asking to do.
But we have a foreclosure list too, don't we? We have a foreclosure list. So we could be watching those.
Yes, we have a foreclosure list. You know, you know, one thing I want to add, because I've been, I've been around in this business for so long, and did the same thing over in St. Louis Park almost 40 years ago. You know, back in the day, you would have companies coming in and having the city do the assessment searches. And, and cities, I think, charge a very nominal fee to do that. But, you know, there have been enterprising individuals who say, no, we're, we'll do that for a lot less than the city can do it. And so there are less and less companies coming in and having the city do assessment of searches than there, than there used to be, and they come in and they can view the records themselves. Now, now, now they can't? Okay. Well, they used to, and that, that happened a lot, quite a bit. So there, there just is not, not that many people doing assessment search, having us do assessment searches. And I, I feel pretty comfortable if, if they're paying the city of Richfield to do an assessment search, we're going to pick up all these, all the pendings.
My other thought was that we do water bills on a three-month basis. Is there some way that, that this could be attached to a water bill, which typically is the homeowner's responsibility?
But we have a foreclosure list, correct? Because now they have to tell us when there's shut-offs and those kinds of things, so we have a list of foreclosure, so we know when these are foreclosed.
Yes.
On these properties, and so we could look at those right away, and just keep a tab on them when we're out servicing them all the time, and that would be a way to do it.
Yeah, we, we do, and we, you know, we follow that list. When we know we've got foreclosure sitting out there, we know that's going to, for the most part.
Because we drive them, we drive them, police drive them, correct?
Yes, right.
The, so if someone closes after September 1st, will, if in fact the title company does do the title check and checks for special assessments, pending specials?
Well, if everything works the way it should be, the title company does the search, they call the city, and we let them know that, yeah, there's a, you know, there's a potential weed assessment or nuisance assessment on here, so that needs to be taken care of.
Okay. I mean, that would be, I mean, that's the, the solution, is that the, you know, the title company should be checking title before the property sells, and when they find it, that would be something that the homeowner, future homeowner should say, well, pay it off, you're the responsible party.
Yeah, and typically something like that is getting, is, is taken care of at the time of the closing of the home, if it sells or something like that.
Okay.
Good discussion. How many other comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Elliott.
Thank you, Your Honor. This item for council consideration is a public hearing regarding the special assessment role for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property. Richfield city code and city charter allow the city to specially assess delinquent false alarm user fees against respective properties. State statutes provide the city may levy a special one-year assessment for these costs. Unpaid alarm user fees must be paid to the city within 30 days from the date of the written notice by the city to the alarm user. Fees not paid within the time specified will be subject to a 10% penalty charge. The special assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees assessed to private properties provides a means for the city to recover costs incurred with the response by public safety to an alarm call on certain properties in the city that turns out to be false. It's a public hearing, Your Honor. Do you want to open the hearing?
Please. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak to this? Anyone here to speak to this? It's a public hearing. I'll move to close the public hearing. Second. All those in favors signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Councilmember?
Upon the closing of the public hearing, at this time, I would move to conduct and close the public hearing and approve the attached resolution adopting the assessment for unpaid false alarm user fees against private property.
I'll second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Just, just to comment, Your Honor, is, is so that everybody knows that the city knows no favorite sons. There's a seven properties addresses on here, and one happens to be 2409 West 66th Street, which happens to be owned by myself.
Was it the cat?
It, it was a finicky alarm system, that's all I can say. But, you know, I, we're going to pay our, our fee, and, and I will suggest that a couple times I may charge it back to the city because the canine patrol has come over and practiced using their dogs to clear the building. So I, I, there should be turnabout here, but I, you know, I'm not going to bill you, so.
Okay.
But, you know, I can say with that, that, that when I get the call, by the time I get the call from the alarm system, and I'm two blocks from the office, by the time I'm there, the police are waiting in the parking lot for me. So the response time is, is without question.
Phenomenal.
Is better than anybody can expect. So that's, if I ever do need it, I know they're going to be there, and I'm not going to have to go in that building by myself, and I appreciate that.
Why don't you give them a key?
Well, I could, you know, and then they could just use those dogs all the time, and I, I don't know, I've got a dog that will chase chipmunks, I don't know if it'd catch mice, but if any of your canines can get those, we got a couple of those in the building, it's that time of the year, you know, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Sandow.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is another public hearing, and it's, we will be taking testimony, but then we will probably be continuing the hearing until October. This is having to do with the annual 77th Street Maintenance District Assessment, and the city of Richfield has been doing this since 1988, when the 77th Street developments were put in place between 35W and Cedar Avenue. And for anybody that's ever driven 77th Street, you know that it's, it's like a park, it's lovely, it's got trees and ivy growing up the wall, and it's very attractive, but it takes money to do that. And so a special maintenance district was established, which deals with things including irrigation, weeding, mowing of the landscape on both sides of the 77th Street wall, and they are funded through the maintenance assessment for the 77th Street businesses. And staff is recommending that we actually continue the public hearing, since there was some discrepancy in the letters that went out, and we want to make sure that everybody gets the full opportunity to get full notice and be able to respond. So if anyone is here that wants to give testimony, we could open up the public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward on the 77th Street assessment to speak to this? Anyone come forward to speak to this? I'll make a motion to continue.
I, until October 28th, and I will second the same.
Any other council member discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is continued. And I have the next item. This is also a, we have had a lot of public hearings tonight. This is a public hear, hearing regarding the special assessment role for removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered in 2013. According to section 910 of the city code, it has been determined that the health and of trees within municipal limits is threatened by shade trees' diseases, and it is the city's responsibility to control and prevent the spread of these diseases. If the city has deemed it necessary to remove a diseased tree, the property owner has four options available for private tree removal. They could remove it themselves, could hire and pay their own contractor, they could hire the city's contractor and pay for removal, they could request the cost of the tree removal be assessed against their property taxes. In the period from January 1st, 2013 through December 31st, 2013, I bet, I suppose I'm supposed to read, 19 property owners chose the fourth option. The total amount to be assessed is $43,772.34. The property owners at 6612 Vincent contracted staff regarding the proposed assessment. The tree removal was ordered while the properties were vacant. The timeline for removal is as follows, and I don't need to read those. The property owners felt that this assessment should not be his responsible because he was not the owner of the property at the time of the removal, and cases where the property is vacant and no owner can be found, removals must be ordered when trees have passed a removal time limit or before hazard. So I'm sure we have to go back and figure out who's going to be assessed for that, for that one. But this is a really good program for those people who have diseased trees in their homes or, and it's highly impactful. Some of these trees cost thousands of dollars to remove. You can have them and put on your taxes for many years, and you can easily pay that off rather than having to come up with thousand dollars, thousands of dollars, and, you know, we're faced with, you know, the, the old ash borer now, and we still have a lot of, a few elm trees that are also, and we have oak wilt. So if you have one of those big beautiful trees and it's dying, I'm sorry to say that, we do have an option to try to help you out, so. So this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to come forward to speak to this matter? Please, state, state your name and address.
Jim Fingerman, 6612 Vincent Avenue. Madam Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity. It was my house you were discussing previously, and I appreciate that, bringing that up. I did not own the property at the time this happened. I remember watching that tree being taken down and thinking, oh, thank goodness, I don't have to pay that bill, somebody else will be responsible, because I didn't own the property at the time, and it was a major project. I knew it was going to be an expensive proposition for someone, didn't realize that it was the city that was handling that. Anyhow, I received notification that almost thirty-five hundred dollars was now being assessed to the property that I purchased, uh, December twelfth of last year. Uh, if I'm correct, I believe that the tree was removed in August of two thousand thirteen. I don't, I, I am empathetic to the concerns over how this is going to be handled and what needs to happen, I don't know that I feel accountable for it, but, um, obviously it's, it was a surprise to me to realize that this was going to be something that was going to be coming to my attention. Due to the multiple conversations I've had with Councilmember Elliott, I probably should pay his special assessment for his alarm system to make up for the time I've taken from him. Other than that, I don't have a lot to offer, I guess, uh, I would like to have that open for some discussion, and if
Okay.
there's further questions, I'd be happy to give my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. This is a public hearing, would, would anyone else like to come forward? Anyone else to come forward on this? I'll move to close the public hearing. Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, staff, can, can we, i- is that case that, that he didn't, this was not the owner actually of the property at the time?
Yeah, I think the situation that was referred to earlier is, it describes this case perf- perfectly, the work was done, the bank was responsible, the, the title company should have checked it, they didn't, and so it was left pending, uh, unbeknownst to the new, the new buyer.
And what are we doing to assist him? Can we do anything to help him?
Well, um, I'm certainly not an attorney, but it would seem to me that whoever signed off on the title search, saying that there was no pending assessment.
Is responsible.
Would have some responsibility, I mean, if I were paying someone for a title search, uh, or I had title insurance on it.
Oh, yeah, if it's title insurance on the insurance, it's going to cover it.
I don't, I don't know, again, I'm not an attorney, but I mean, whoever did the title search on it should have picked up that there was a pending assessment. Um, and, you know, in this particular case, um, and I don't know the specifics of it, but it appears that Wells Fargo Bank was the one who, who may have owned the property at the time. Uh, and Wells Fargo Bank is not stepping up and doing anything about it. And again, the, the new resident, um, obviously did not know that that was a pending assessment on the, on the property.
Councilmember?
I am an attorney, so I'm, now, a couple things, um, it looks to me, I mean, if, if nothing else, Wells Fargo may have perpetrated a fraud on the city with the letter they sent four days after they got noticed that they were going to be charged for the tree. With that being said, I'm wondering, and I, once again, I'll defer to, to the city attorney, if we can, can hold this in abeyance, and what I would suggest I would do, and, and, Jim, if you tell anybody else I did this, I'll, I won't admit it. Okay, but, but why don't, let me, you know, get your closing documents and come by and let me take a look at them and see if I can't put a little, little leverage on whoever the title examiner was, or whoever did that, and see if I can't tell them that they can either do it the easy way, they can do it the hard way, and see if we can't get the, the proper party to pay the assessment. And I'm not asking for a long time, but if we can set this one aside, give me an opportunity to work with Jim and with Wells Fargo to see if I can get the proper party to pay it.
Staff?
Um, Madam Mayor, Council. You know, I
City Attorney?
As everybody knows, assessments go with the property, so I, I concur with the city manager's comments here that this should have been something that came out during the purchase of the property and any title searches. Now, um, this, the council could certainly remove this particular parcel from the assessment, um, role and come back to it later, if it chose to do that. That's up to the council if it wants to set that, that precedent for taking that step versus having private property owners take care of these matters, um, during their transactions, but that's, I think, within the discretion of the council.
I appreciate that, and I would certainly suggest that, that, Jim is a longtime resident and a commercial property owner, he's been in Richfield a long time, and, and he's, you know, he's, he's not comfortable with the situation, he understands it and everything, but I'd hate to have a situation because, because we've got banks that are recalcitrant and aren't doing what they're supposed to do, that we get new residents coming in and being faced with the same situation in the city council not being in a position to say, you know what, we appreciate you, we, we're going to show you what kind of a community are, because we may not be able to resolve it, but we're at least going to try to. And, and so in that sense, um, I, I, I think that, that, and I don't want to set it, set it as an obligation, I know that, that city manager DeBitch hates when I use precedent, so I'm going to stay away from that, but what I'd like to do is at least have the opportunity to see if we can't make it right for, for Jim and any new citizen that may, may run afoul of a bank that's not doing what they're supposed to do. So.
Question?
Questions?
I have a question.
Excuse me, councilmembers, Sandau.
Um, what's our timeline in terms of getting these on the rolls?
That's where, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we, we can wait till the next meeting to deal with this, we have to.
Can we, can we just take the whole thing and wait? Give them thirty days?
Yeah, that's
That, well, that
No, till the next meeting, till the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth?
Yeah.
Oh, so this gives you a couple, okay.
Two weeks.
I don't know, I mean, I, I know for a fact that we can wait till the twenty-eighth of October. To deal with this.
Okay. I had, I had one other question, and that was wondering when he signed, when did you sign your purchase agreement? Would it have been in August, or? Okay, fine. Because clearly Wells Fargo is responding to say, in, it is fraud, they're saying, we're not the owner anymore.
My sense of it.
Yeah, I know, they're kind of admitting to, yeah. Interesting, isn't it?
Can I make a suggestion, then? If we go through this, is it possible to let all these other go forward, just hold us one off?
Okay, we can do that.
So that we at least got them on the, uh, tax rolls and then we don't have an issue later?
Yes, I, I think it would be good to, so the other folks know that it's been, it's been done, they requested the assessment.
I can make the motion to have that, that's a good idea.
So the sixty-six-twelve Vincent would be removed from the role, all the rest would Yeah. be included.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to approve the attached resolution adopting the assessment for removal of diseased trees from the private property for work ordered for January first, twenty thirteen, through December thirty-first, twenty thirteen, with the removal of sixty-six-twelve Vincent Avenue South.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to us.
And may I ask, if I could ask the city manager, um, so that the tree removal issues is acting in this, it, as far as the city is concerned, that's one more thing on our pending assessments, is that accurate or not? So we have a list, so that if, so then when the title company calls and says, what are your pending assessments, that would show up?
Yeah.
If they're doing their job.
I got one other question, too, ma'am.
Thank you. Please, comment.
Uh, do we still do a point of sale when they sell a house, where we go there? Is there a way to notify them during that point of sale, we have a pending?
Councilmember Fitz Henry, members of the city council, you know, I suppose, the problem with that, the problem with me wanting to do that, is that those people are really, the folks who are doing the point of sale are not familiar with, with those things, and I would be, I just think that passing that information through one other department that's not that familiar with it, I mean, I think that sets us up if we forget to do it, or, or something of that nature. Because someone could, could, you know, I imagine, could say they relied on the information, and someone could forget to do that, and, uh, it's, it goes under the heading in my book of, no good deed goes unpunished.
Okay.
But you know, the fact of the matter is, if, if people who are doing title searches do it appropriately, get ahold of our assessing department, these things are going to be found.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's that simple, it's
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
It's unfortunate, that's
The homeowner gets cut the middle.
Exactly, right.
You know, and some of these homeowners who are coming into are, they're, they're families with a lot of children, they don't, three, thirty-five hundred dollars would really hurt them.
Exactly.
I know.
It's just a matter of, you know, you're depending on someone to do their job, uh, when you're purchasing a home, yeah.
Yeah. Other comments? All right, Councilmember Fitz Henry, you have the next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this item is a public hearing regarding the attached resolutions pertaining to the annual Lyndale Hub Nicklet, known as LHN, Maintenance Assessment Process. The Lyndale Hub Nicklet Maintenance Assessment was established to recover extraordinary maintenance expenses in the Lyndale Hub Nicklet area in nineteen eighty-one. The extraordinary services include irrigation, weeding, and mowing of landscape areas. The LHN redevelopment areas approximately bound by Sixty-fourth Street, First Avenue, Sixty-seventh Street, and Emerson Avenue. Staff is recommending the city council assess twenty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixteen cents against the LHN for work done in two thousand thirteen. Proposed is a similar assessment for two thousand fifteen. At the July eighth special council meeting work session, it was discussed of a possible elimination of the LHN Maintenance District in two thousand sixteen. Possible elimination of the Maintenance District will be considered for the following reasons: the Sixty-sixth Street reconstruction in two thousand sixteen, and elimination of original landscape features from the district. New rules for establishing Maintenance Districts, possible elimination of Maintenance Districts, will be discussed further at a later date. So I'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public, uh, hearing for this, uh, Lyndale Hub Nicklet Maintenance District.
Public hearing is open, would anyone like to come forward? Please come forward and speak, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Dale Woodbeck, I'm the general manager at Lake Winds Food Co-op at sixty-four twenty Lyndale. Be interested in knowing if there are other services other than those that you described, because I don't think those, you know, or at least our property, I'd like, what I'm asking for is to be removed from the, to not be assessed as part of that. That property, as you know, was under redevelopment in two thousand thirteen into two thousand fourteen, um, and we installed at our expense sidewalks, landscaping, streetlights, um, and we have a maintenance agreement now with the city, uh, that covers, it sounds like, the same services that are being, that were being described, um, and in this redevelopment area. So it's, for us, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's, it just feels like it, we're kind of double dipping here.
Staff, just make a note of that, so that when we study that?
Sure.
That this is brought back up, and we let them know.
Yeah, I can comment about that also, I think one, one of the reasons we brought this up at the study session was situations like this that are being redeveloped and different features are being brought in. All of the properties, they'll pay for things like street lighting that is district-wide, and some medians that are, that are, that are elsewhere, but I, I have to say that, you know, especially in front of this property, he is taking care of much of the perimeter kind of, um, landscape treatments that the district has taken care of in the past.
Okay, so we'll have to have further discussion, thank you for bringing that.
Appreciate it.
This is a public hearing, would anyone else like to come forward to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to come to the public hearing? Anyone? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Then I'll go ahead and, uh, recommend the action that we adopt the attached resolution proposing the assessment, or assess commercial properties in the Lyndale Hub Nicklet districts for cost incurred to maintain the area for two thousand thirteen. And adopt the attached resolution proposing a similar assessment process to be implemented for two thousand fifteen.
I'll second.
Comment?
Please.
We appreciate Lake Winds, um, being here, thank you for coming. And, um, we did talk about this at our July study session, and one of the things that we were looking at is the fact that Sixty-sixth Street will be reconstructed in two thousand sixteen, um, which will totally change many of the landscape features which we've been maintaining for a number of years. Um, so it is not something we're not unaware of, and it will be looked at. I'm not exactly sure what the timeline will be, but it is something we're aware of, and we appreciate you coming.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is good. Councilmember Garcia?
Oh, okay, again, huh?
Yep.
I get a bump in my paycheck. This is, um, item number twelve, it's a consideration for a request of a one-year extension of land use approvals granted for sixty, sixty-three thirty, sixty-four hundred, and sixty-four forty, Lyndale Avenue, which is also called Lyndale Gardens. Okay, on March the twenty-sixth, the council approved plans for the redeveloped, redevelopment of land formerly occupied by the Lyndale Garden Center. Approved plans called for development that would include a hundred and fifty-one unit apartment building, nine thousand square feet of retail space, two thousand six hundred square feet of restaurant space, and outdoor activity areas that would coordinate with construction of Lake Winds Co-op. City approved approvals are valid for one year unless construction has begun and substantial work has been completed. Then after that, in December, the council approved an amendment to the proposed project that would allow the seven thousand square feet of restaurant space in the development. And that approval extended the permit, uh, expiration deadline to December of two thousand fourteen. Now, uh, we have, um, as Cornerstone Group tries to secure, uh, the funding and stability in that, they have requested an additional six months extension and sta-
One year.
No, I, no, six month, and then, and then the, the staff can also, so a six months extension, and after that, if, uh, if they need an additional extension, then staff would be able to, to accommodate that. Because that's what the, um, yeah, okay.
Okay, you're reading down for this.
Right. So, um, so with that, uh, I, you know, unless someone, I'm ready to move the, uh, recommended action if, if anyone, uh, has any questions or any comments.
Make the motion first.
Don't have anything additional, but if you have questions, um, also Beth Piper from the Cornerstone Group is here, if you have questions.
Do you want to ask them if they want to have, if they want to come?
Did you want to come forward and say anything?
You know, before they come up, I think that, that Lake Winds, just, you know, it's a superstore, and, uh, we really appreciate the addition to Richfield.
Nice lunch place, too.
Absolutely. Good, good salads.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Colleen Carey, I'm the president of the Cornerstone Group. I'm hoping the next time I come here, just to invite you to the groundbreaking, um, we're still working, and, um, I, we do need an extension on the PUD agreement. We've had, um, quite a bit of good success since we were here last. We have, um, several letters of intent from investors on the tax credit portion of the project, so there are two different investment components to this. Actually, there are, in the end, there will probably be sixteen to eighteen sources of financing, which is why it's taking us a little bit longer to get it all figured out. Some of these investors want to fund affordable housing, and some don't, and some will fund market rate housing and not affordable, and so we're trying to figure out how all those pieces fit together. We're in conversations with multiple tax credit investors and multiple market rate investors, and, um, we're just working it as best we can, we have a number of foundations that are interested in supporting this project, and we have a number of, of more traditional equity investors. The interesting thing that we didn't anticipate, a couple of people told us this might be hard, uh, to do, and, um, we said, yeah, we thought that probably was true, but I don't think we realized that we might be forging such new ground that some of the foundations that are supporting us are national foundations, that consider this to be actually a national model for how to do, uh, a really holistic, mixed-use, mixed-income community that focuses on, on healthy living and incorporating all the great elements that we've been talking about, about art and nature and local food, and I wish that I had known when we started down the path that there would be those complications, but, um, we're still committed to the vision, we're still, we still think we can deliver on that vision. Um, we have, um, been in some conversations, I, I think I would be allowed to say this, there, uh, that Health Partners would like to initiate with us a, um, a health initiative for the whole city of Richfield that would be based out of, of, um, Lyndale Gardens, and so we've got a lot of conversations where you would help us design that kind of thing, but Health Partners would like to hire somebody that they would bring in, that would work from our project and spread out from there to, um, create a healthy living initiative that would start at Lyndale Gardens, but could be for the whole community by the time we're done. So we're excited about some of the partnerships that we've developed along the way, and, um, I'm sure you'd like me to be under construction, and, um, probably only about half as much as I'd like to be under construction. Um, I, I hope you'll be able to grant us this extension, and I think that we're, we're very close, we really are talking to four or five very serious players that can add to the pile of sixteen pieces, but, uh, we're getting pretty close, so.
So you're talking about Health Partners maybe, um, occupying a space in your retail area?
Well, it's not, it's not determined yet wh- how this, how this whole thing would, would roll out, in fact, what, what we'd like to do is convene a group of city people, residents, I mean, city staff and elected officials, residents, and businesses to help figure out how we could launch something that would start at Lyndale Gardens, but would really spread from there, and they might just use our community room space, um, or they might eventually decide that they wanted to do more, but we're not talking about them being a tenant, we're talking about them being a community partner that would implement programming with us.
Although a tenant wouldn't hurt, would it?
No, that, that was our first suggestion.
Okay.
And that's still in the planning stages, we'll be back to you with more, because we really have to create the program, but since there's no building, it's not, uh, a giant rush.
So public hearing, would anyone else like to come forward?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Oh, it's not, sorry. Any questions? Oh, it's not? Sorry.
No.
Sorry. I've said so many public hearings, I think it's a public hearing.
Yeah. So, thank you.
Any other questions from Stan?
Wait a minute.
No, I don't have questions. Well, I do. Ms. Carey, I recall six or eight months ago getting a letter from you indicating that you were looking for equity partners at that time, but a change in financing would have added four or five points, but it was still all equity partners and moving forward. Two or three months ago, we had a Met Council member here telling us how great the $2.5 million was going to aid your project and move it forward, for which we guaranteed. And at that time, my distinct recollection was is the, the public amenities were going to be completed this summer, and that the construction then would move forward around it next fall. Now, everything is put off. Now we're talking 16 or 18 other moving parts. There's no equity partners. There's tax increment, which is something we'd never contemplated. If you're going to start getting some tax financing, we're getting into affordable housing. I'm not sure the city council is, or the community is going to accept. Depends on what the parameters are. The problem I've got is we've been hearing promises and visions for three years, and Lake Winds is there and it's a wonderful addition, but Lake Winds is there because they bought property from you and built their own facility. So I, I find it somewhat disingenuous that you're taking credit for that being the, completed the first part of the project. I, I'm really disconcerted at the fact we're still hearing promises and we're not seeing any work done. And the six months, I can give you that. It's predicated upon the fact that, that you've got final financing at that time and that the, the public amenities are in. You know, I hope you make it. I don't think you're going to, and that's going to be, put a burden on the staff to see whether they can give you another six months. I, when I first met you and first saw your visions, I love them, I love them today. I have serious concerns about your ability to financially do it. And that's why, that's why I, I had some lengthy discussion with the Met Council member that, that wanted us to guarantee it, said it's never been lost, it's never been put at risk. I keep seeing these extensions, I keep seeing moving parts on who you're looking for to help finance this. How are you going to bring, with a single apartment building, you're going to bring tax increment finance or tax financing or tax rebate financing together with market rate? You know, I, I, I don't understand what you're telling us with 16 different people looking at different ways of financing or coming to the party. I didn't understand who you were looking for, equity partners that, that were going to, that were going to pony up an additional five points that you talked about in your letter six months ago. We're getting, I love the vision, I don't believe that you are going to be able to come through with the financing, and that scares me to death.
I can try to answer different people, there's a lot in there.
Well, there's a lot you gave.
Yeah, so as, as it relates to the public improvements, when we came back here with the Met Council, we actually brought the Met Council with us so that they could explain the process for starting the public improvement, but it turned out that there's more Met Council process that had, had not, had to get, we had to go through to change the grant agreement to start that work early. So we have now received the general approval, and now I think they're working out the language to the modification of a grant agreement, and Beth's working with our contractor to see what element of this we could start yet this year.
If, Madam Mayor, would you agree with me that it would have been a good idea to let us in on that as long as we're partnering with you on this? So that if, if that's what's happening, don't come in once every six months and tell me what's gone past. If something like that comes up and you say the process has changed a little bit, all it takes is a short note to, to staff, to Karen or somebody, and we can be made aware of what's going on. That alleviates, alleviates a lot of the concerns and the reason I call the city manager and ask, what have you heard of anything? So I mean, would you admit that we've partnered with you for the last three years in, in a lot of financial dealings and everything and trying to get this project moving forward? And I think the courtesy of keeping us up to speed when something like that happens would be much appreciated, at least by me.
Maybe we should have a different mechanism for doing that. Maybe I should come here just more regularly because I do, I do regularly update people, but I don't come to a public meeting and give the full information. So I, I would be happy to come more often to present directly to you.
Thank you.
So a couple of, so we're trying to start the public improvements this year. That was our intention, and we're waiting on the Met Council to get some documentation done because we can't apply for our permit until we have this modified grant agreement. So that's the problem there, and I, it's not really in our court, and it hasn't been in our court, so we're waiting for that in that regard. I'm sorry that you've lost confidence in us. I, I guess I can understand that we've been saying what we wanted to do for a long time. If we wanted to give in, we could have just built a basic apartment building or built an affordable housing project in this site, and all of it could have happened a long time ago. What we're committed to is delivering what we told you we would do, which is not to do either of those things, but to do something that's much bigger and much more transformational and, and happens to be much more complicated. And if you would like us to pursue a different path, then I guess that's a whole nother conversation that we should be having. What we're intent on doing is providing what we said we would do, which is a market rate project. I'm, I'm not sure that I understand your questions about the tax pieces of it. There's, there's, there's an affordable housing component of this that has always been a part of the project, and 20% of the units are affordable, and they generate a, a low-income housing tax credit. And that is a very specific investor that buys that tax credit. This has always been the case, and we've had a number of investors who are interested in buying that piece of the project, but their investment has to fit with the other investor. And so we can't really finalize everything until we have all the pieces in place. I, I don't know if we did or didn't say there would be 16 pieces, but frankly, I've never done a project that didn't have at least a dozen because we're going out and doing things that other public agencies are wanting to support. And so we have Hennepin County money, we have Met Council money, we have more Hennepin County, we have the Family Housing Fund, the Land Bank. We have all kinds of people that are participating in this project because they too believe in this vision. If you're tired of waiting, there's probably another scenario, but it's not the one that we promised. And what we're intent on doing is delivering what we promised, and it's going to take us a little bit longer and, and I, I guess if you said, get the heck out of town, we, we'd have to figure out a new plan. But what we're trying to do is do what we said, and we have every intention of doing that. And I'm sorry that you've lost confidence. I have not. If I had lost confidence, I wouldn't keep coming back in here talking to you about this project. This is an important project for us, and, and it's an important project for our region, which is why we have all these folks that have supported it. And it turns out that it's an important project for us to demonstrate nationally something that people want to get done, but isn't very easy to do. So it's harder than I thought it was going to be, and I'm sorry that we're still sitting here talking about it, but I don't have any doubt that we'll get it done.
A couple of things I would suggest, that, that we spent a long time, two or three years ago, talking about affordable housing, and at no time did, did we categorize it as low-income housing. I'm surprised that's a term that you would use. Secondly, one of the reasons I'm concerned is that there's been an enormous amount of money that's changed hands and gone over to Cornerstone that to date, and Cornerstone, I was real, wasn't real happy when you sold the parcel so that Lake Winds could build because you used some of our money to buy that. What I'm saying is you've been given a lot of money, or pledged a lot of money, or granted a lot of money, from the county, from us, from Met Council, and there is not one iota of things that have happened there in the two and a half, three years. So if, if you're trying to put it back on me for being disappointed or losing faith in you, you have to understand the perspective I've got up here as a guardian of the cities, of this city and of their money and their investment in Lyndale Gardens and what you're doing with it. I've told you already that I don't want you to change that plan at all. What I've said is, is the history and what we're seeing from six months ago when you were still looking for equity partners and everything was looking really strong, and I, my recollection is you may have even had some letters of intent at that time, we're still in the same position, but you've changed your horse a little bit on what kind of equity you're looking for and what kind of partners. What I'm saying is I need some consistency and I need something over there getting started, and I need a commitment, not a promise.
Well, and Councilmember Sandell wants to speak.
You know, that's one person's opinion, you know, and you're welcome to it. I guess I haven't lost faith with you. I walk a block from my house and enjoy Kensington, and that was certainly a dramatic change for the better in Richfield, and you were involved with that. I know you've been working at it. I can appreciate that you are pulling a lot, together a lot of different pieces to try and make this thing work, and it is a unique concept. And, you know, I guess, I think maybe the one comment that Councilmember Elliott has said is he felt like he wasn't in the know, and maybe that's something that you've indicated that you will let us know more often when things do change, and I think that's a good, a good plan. But I'm certainly prepared to vote yes on this case, and I, I trust that when we are all there for the ground baking, we'll all feel really good about it.
You know, and I, I want to say following this project has, has been a difficult thing, and I go to ULI, and Karen Barton is, is a part, a member of ULI, and I know that Colleen Carey's a part of this, and some of the things that we are doing are very cutting-edge here out of ULI, and she is garnering national things, and I know that that takes a long time. I don't mind us being a trendsetter if we can pull this together, and I think if there's anyone who can do it, it's probably Colleen, so I haven't lost faith in that this will come through either.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
Just in all fairness, I wanted to make it clear that Cornerstone did make staff aware of the delay in the grant. They were requesting an amendment to the grant, so that had to go through staff from Met Council. So we were aware of it.
The council was not.
You weren't aware of it a month ago when I talked with the city manager, because he called me two weeks later to tell me that, that they had asked for an extension. So about two weeks ago was when I first became aware of it, and it came from the city manager, no one else. But it was after I'd made the call to ask what was going on. So to say, you were made aware, but it was very, very close to this meeting, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Actually, we've been aware, aware of it for probably a couple of months, working with Met.
Other comments, please?
I'm confident something's going to happen, but I'd like to be in the know, too. And would it be unreasonable to ask for maybe a monthly update?
No.
That we could, we could be sent so we at least have an indication, or we're not slammed with something all at once? I'd appreciate that.
Go through staff, then. Okay?
Okay, having said all that.
Could I just clarify one last thing? I'm really sorry, but the, the nature of the affordable housing has not changed from our, our original proposal. It's always been 80% market rate, 20% affordable, and it's exactly the same as what we proposed, and we're not suggesting any changes to that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for stepping up.
Well, I, I know that with the current climate, it's just not easy to, to take care of business the way we would love it to, to happen, but at the same time, I, I applaud the fact that, you know, you're vigilant about, Councilmember Elliott, that you're vigilant about the city's money and, and the process, so, but I, I will move that we approve a six-month extension and authorize staff to provide an additional six-month extension of final development plans and the associated conditional use permit for the Lyndale Garden Plan Unit Development at 6330, 6400, and 6440 Lyndale Avenue contingent upon substantial completion of the construction of the quasi-public improvements and securing full project funding by June the 10th, 2015.
Second. Other discussion or comments, please?
I suspect that we'll hear on a regular basis from staff.
Well, Madam, Madam Mayor, I guess the way I would prefer it would work is I think it's fair to say that we should get a monthly report. I would like the, I would like the monthly letter of status generated by, by Ms. Carey and, and addressed directly to me and the city council, and then, then we're not interpreting anything, and it can be exactly as Ms. Carey states it.
That's fine.
You know, and then sometimes I, I sit up here and I know that there's disagreement, but you know, that's, that's what we have to do is flush things out, and, and that's, that's, you know, why we have, why we have this before the public, so I appreciate that part of it. So I will renew my motion.
It's been seconded. Is there any further, further, further discussion? You know what, I just think that there is misunderstanding when there's not enough communication. So I think that's, that's good to flush some of that out, too. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. City manager, your report.
I really don't have much to report, other than I attended a forum put on, an energy forum by Excel Energy, and, you know, part of, part of that was some really interesting facts about the, the clean energy that, that Excel is kind of leading the country in. I think that if I remembered it, the statistic, I think 13% of the energy that they are creating is coming from wind right now, and they're a leader in that, and they're trying for 2015 to have a 40% increase in that. And also that, that the price, the people ought to be aware that the price that they're paying for energy in the Midwest is so much cheaper than what people are paying on the, on the two coasts and in other parts of the country. So, I mean, I felt pretty good about it. I felt pretty good about what, what Excel was looking at doing, again, with clean energy, with solar and with wind especially, and kind of moving away from coal and, and nuclear, creating more nuclear power.
So any, going to be any advantages for the cities to be able to do, like solar kinds of?
No, I mean, one of the, one of the things that I was fascinated by was they had a huge discussion on solar, and, you know, the, if you, if you take a look at the, at the, at the cost benefit of solar, in, I think at the end, in 2016, the 30%, the 30% incentive that the, that the federal government gives, that, that goes away, and they're thinking it's going to drop down to more like 10, and that that's going to make it, you know, very, that's, that's going to drop some of the development of solar. But here in the Midwest, the, the fact that we pay so much less for energy compared to the coasts, we have so much less sunlight than they have on the coasts, doesn't make it very beneficial for, for, for us in the Midwest to put a ton of money into, into solar. We, we have a lot better luck with wind here because we, you know, we benefit from a lot of wind, especially when you look at the western Minnesota border, and they're generating a lot of power from that. So I, I think, you know, and, you know, we've taken a look at the solar a couple of different times. I've taken a run at it with a couple of different companies, using solar on the ice arena, using solar on some of our liquor stores, and after all is said and done and we look at it, it just, just doesn't, doesn't work for right now.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll keep, we'll stay tuned, we'll figure out something maybe. The geothermal is really pretty cool in our public works, a lot of people don't know about that one.
Absolutely, yeah, the geothermal.
That has worked very well for us.
That's worked very well. Yeah.
And I think there'll be some more with some of the wind. I've, I've looked at some of the architects that are now putting in wind turbines in the construction of buildings that are actually part of the facade, and you don't even know they're there, and that they generate electricity. I mean, I think that's coming.
I think, I think, yeah, from listening to that discussion today, I think there's, there's a lot going to be happening with wind.
Yeah, really cool.
Yeah.
Stay tuned.
Yeah.
Claims and payroll?
Uh-huh.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.